Our committee meeting, April fifth, six o'clock. We have two items on the agenda. One is utilities commission and the other one is portable housing.
Okay. Oh, this is the one where they're.
Yes. If you'll indulge me, why don't we focus on the affordable housing committee change first because it's just a technical.
No one's gonna be able to see the whole meeting because that's gonna show on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So if you'll indulge me, we could maybe focus on the affordable house kind of committee change first because it's just a technical oversight, drafting oversight. The way we adopted it at the town council. It said that the no more than five members should be registered with the same political party. Actually. That number five was derived from an earlier draft where we had a total of seven. But once it moved to nine, I neglected to change the five to six, which would conform it to state law. So sorry with you. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, that sounds good. I didn't know that it was.
No, we didn't discuss it because it was. That's why no one noticed that it was wrong. It just. Yeah, it was. Yeah, I think we all looked at it as a spoiler play. But. Anyway, so the new language. So I would, I would move that we adopt a change to that. Not more than. So the second sentence of section four A dash one A of the housing, of our housing committee ordinance. amended to read not more than six members shall be registered with the same political party. Do I have a second for that?
Christina.
On paper. Great, thank you. That way. So the beauty of scheduling these meetings is that right before the meeting, everybody starts paying attention to the issue. And this is now include some of you, but also I had neglected to. Copy the town attorney. So hopefully Kevin did and they were ready. To respond quickly and they're suggesting some changes, which unfortunately I think means that we won't be able to finalize the language tonight. But we do have some issues to discuss, and I think once we do, we can finalize it in a 10 minute meeting, you know, next week, maybe. I don't know, whatever we want to do. You all have copies with you of the proposed.
Has it changed the point being circulated on the table? I have.
I think that's what I'm passing out. Yeah. You guys good?
All set.
Okay. So let me go through the. What the lawyer said first. Doug Lamontes. The approach I took here was we were reactivating the utilities commission, which is. I don't. From common sense, kind of view, I don't see a problem with language, but he says it's not the way to draft this. We really ought to remove, you know, the. Repeal the current chapter 12 and replace it. So that will, that will just take some language changes. It has no such big impact. I have no problem with that. He suggested that we, in that context, that we make a statement that there shall be a utilities commission. So in 12 point. And 12 dash two instead of shall be reactivated, it would simply say. Utilities, there shall be a utilities commission. There'll be a wraparound resolution that goes with it that explains those. That, you know, that approach and that will make it clear. That it did exist and we're rewriting. So the first substantive question. Hillary asked, and I thought it was a very good question in light of certainly other events that we've been following in town. That maybe we ought to put some kind of a deadline on the creation and really the appointment of members. And so, you know, I suggested this last action dash seven implementation. Doug pointed out quite clearly that that's not enforceable. We can't force the board of selectmen to do anything. So, so I just would like feedback on that, knowing that it wouldn't be enforceable. Would you rather do this or not do it?
I could.
A 90 day rule.
No, no, I understand, but just with the thought, would we be able to say that if a member or new member is not appointed. Within 90 days that the members remain there until such time that. A new member is appointed, then you cannot be less than the number of members we.
I think we can do that, and that's common in a lot of the ordinances. That you stay in your position, I think, until you're replaced.
Exactly.
But that's not the issue we're addressing. We're addressing startup of the new group.
I have a comment. I was wondering if we could change it to 30 days and then say that 30 days has passed and the town council appoints to the committee.
No, we can't do that.
But I'm not sure whether the audit committee, or their approval in the other committee.
That's committee. Of the town.
What do, what do other? What's the other language around committees in terms of implementation?
You mean for other committees?
Correct.
I don't think there's any precedent for them, a deadline. We probably.
So is there a reason that we're afraid that it may not get? I'm sorry.
No. Well, I'm not afraid of that because I think it's, it's now. Very prominent in town. And I think, I think the attitude is that people want to energize it. I think that. Number of names have come forward. So I'm not too worried about a delay, but. You know, you guys might be.
What are the languages there? Like Mark was saying, what are the choices you have?
Well, like I said, there's no precedent for giving the board of selectmen any deadlines.
Yeah, the charter, the charter is pretty clear. You're saying like.
But I think, you know, the worst selectmen has sent a clear message through, you know, the meeting that they had on Tuesday, as well as. The first like the saying, we need to go on the south stuff. So there is a big, there's a lot of methods here to get moving. And, and you know, this is not something that's going to take 90 days. There's folks out there that raised their hand. I think the board of selectmen, they're ready to do this.
Yeah, I will just say, what gave me this idea was reading when after, after Steve had circulated the. The ordinance about the audit committee, section 62 dash three, that's a section eight, within 30 days after this ordinance shall become effective. And board of selectmen shall appoint members of the committee as part. And then it sets forth the timeframe within which. It's appointed. So I do think there is a bit of precedent for the precedent for this. And that kind of gave me the idea. And to be fair and just to be honest and out there, but what gave me, what made me think of this was reading this. And then also this idea that there was going to be a selectmen's committee formed for the purpose of doing the cell towers. Which was a surprise to me because we were forming this utilities commission. And so I was concerned that there was going to be this. Selectment's committee that was going to be meeting, I didn't know whether publicly or not, and then was our utilities commission that are going to be back runner. And so that's why I wanted there to be a timeframe within which this would be constituted and formed. Because I wanted to make sure we weren't spending all this time writing this ordinance that and creating this commission that the public really wants. Particularly right now to address the cell tower issue and it not just. We kind of hanging out there. So that's, that was the genesis of my thought. Having said that, since the board of selectmen has met and said that they prefer. A subcommittee of this commission that we're creating to focus on cell towers. That's less, less of a pressing concern of mine. So, but I do think there is precedent for a timeframe within which this commission.
I think that makes sense. I think every day is better than any days. So I think I shared some of your concerns, but I think Kevin says he's not supporting the utility commission. So if he's the one making the appointments, I'm just confused.
I don't like that. Are they recommendations?
So as a group, as a three, okay, I did not realize that. Thank you.
And we need, in both the DTC and the RDC, when it's without recommendations.
And I understand that 30 days feels tight, particularly with a lot going on. So maybe there's a, maybe there's a compromise there. Or if it's up to you guys. So if you feel like we need something or we don't, or and what that timeframe might be.
I think the public has been waiting so long because we've been, we've been kicking this can down the road. Whether we start in February or January. So I mean, I, I feel like we should try to get some energy going and try and do it soon in the middle.
Well, I think what, one of the things I discussed with Doug is. Do you like the feel of doing something that's not enforceable, you know? Because of this conversation, it's quite clear that this merely is symbolic statement. It's not going to change the implementation schedule. And so in that light, is it really something that we want to do, you know?
What's the downside?
Oh, the ordinances get muddied up with symbolic language that doesn't really have any force in effect.
Well, it doesn't have any force in effect because the first selectmen chose not to appoint.
I don't.
That's true, no matter what. We're all trying to get, I mean, you know, our first life, he's in the room, he's trying to get something going. The, it should, we're dovetailing this together. So, you know. It's 30 days, 16, whatever that is, we'll get this going. I mean, I get a, I don't, I don't mind. To me, if it says 30 days, it's an implementation strategy. You know, if it doesn't, everybody wants to get it done.
Yeah.
That number, you know. It would be surprising if what.
I like having a date just because it gives people a goal to look. It's not like it's a, you must do this within 30 or 45 days. But it does sort of get it on the calendar as like a priority. And so for that reason, I don't like it as like a, we're telling you what to do sort of thing. But as a, this is, we're setting this as a priority and as a goal. So like, let's get moving on this.
I mean, my understanding is there's already people that have come forward. So there should not be a delay. I mean, I think there's eight or nine people that already have their name on the list. So I think that we're good to go.
So do we need dash seven or not? Rita, what do you think?
I think, well, I mean.
Which one's far?
No, that's okay. I mean, Hillary, you just laid out a pretty compelling reason why it would be nice to have one. I mean, I would like to be able to, if it's not enforceable, I kind of see your point about putting something that on there that. I mean, what, what, what does it, what's the objective of, what is it doing? Is there something else we can do that actually could? Push this through, right? I think, I feel like wasting time talking about me not like, not my pet, but I love, I like if we couldn't force it, I think we should. But if you can't, I just.
There's also that force town councils, so we have to get it through our subcommittee up to the council and then vote on it. So that takes, you know. Unless we have a special meeting, we've got to get that part of it done too. So that's, our next meeting is April 17. So.
And is there a way for us just as a group of town council saying, like, saying that we would like, but this is our goal and thinking that, like, communicating that's. Rather than something that isn't going to really affect.
Well, one of the things that we could do, if it's an indication of. What are sort of purposes of this exercise? Then there can be a, a resolution that surrounds this that mentions that as a goal.
That is.
So we don't have to be silent on it, but, but once this gets into the town code, that that language lives forever.
Yeah.
And, you know, as I was doing today on this next issue we're going to discuss, I was looking through every ordinance. That set up a committee, both in the charter and, and ordinances. And I would run into this language and I'd say, oh, that's weird. Why did it do that? And, you know. Yeah. Symbolic. But we can put the language, if it's okay with you, I would strike this and then. Put the language in, you know, as a, as a recommendation and the resolution we use to adopt this one.
I would agree. And I think that when we look at the charter to revise that, we can put some language in there to say that there is within a period of time. All seats in boards and commissions shall be appointed.
We can talk about that. I.
But it can be addressed later.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we, you know, move it forward?
But, but I, I really think the compelling argument. I wish it could be personal.
Right. But in that intro, I, I, I'm really uncomfortable, uncomfortable. Things overreaching to do 30 days. I think that's just too short. Process takes time.
Sixty, something like that.
The people are comfortable with.
Yeah, 45.
You're joking.
I don't know why we're meeting if there's already eight people on the list. 45, that's a compromise, but 62, no, it's 45.
Well, okay. All right.
So we're going 45.
45.
But it's coming out, right?
Well, it's going to go. And don't forget, you've got to notice the ordinance. Well, this would. This would key off the, the date that we.
We actually.
Right. Because our adoption wouldn't be effective until we go through those steps. The next issue they raised is. I understand there's been a proposal to have the board of selectmen appointments to the commission be subject to confirmation or ratification by a town council. So Doug's. I think I sent an email. I don't know if you all have been able to see it, but, but of the, of the various committees and commissions that we have, something like. 13 of them have this kind of language, which doesn't require town council confirmation. The only bodies that I could find that. Require confirmation, confirmation are audit committee, which we said some later, board of finance and board of. So it's, it's not unusual to not put that in. In fact, Doug was saying it's, it probably would require a charter change to actually put it in. In Tibet. And of course, this is just an ordinance. So he's. I said, is that your, is that your final opinion? And he said, well, he said, he only had, he only had. A little bit of time this afternoon to come up with this. So no, I said, if, if, if we're determined to do that, then he would, he would do more analysis and come up with a formal. But chances are where that's going to come out, it's that it would require a charter and then. When the town council perhaps. Have to confirm. And it also would be.
That, that, the total confirmation of every seat, parking, rag, parking, you know, that's, that eat up a lot of meeting time. Yeah, that's a lot. I think the way this is set up is actually the wisest way to do it is that those particular. Or that is should come to the council, but the rest. There's no reason to give that much of any time. It's just, it seems like way too many.
Yeah, I know, I know tonight may, may make you wonder, however, in general, if you look back over the last many years, how many appointments are non-confirmed? Because there is a lot of seats.
A tiny percentage. I will, yeah. And that percentage would, would apply even if we made this apply to all the committees. But we'd be spending a lot of time for something which. That really isn't all that productive. So. I think that the question is whether we, you know, whether we leave that out and ask him for. A formal opinion or how do you want to proceed on this?
Again, if we, if it says that we would have to confirm the appointments, that may not be, that also may not be enforceable. Probably wouldn't be. Well.
Why isn't it allowed in the ethics committee?
Because it says in the charter.
And as Christine said, if you want to change the charter, that's how to do it.
But you don't want to go back and revise every ordinance to say that.
Well, you wouldn't have to. You could do an overarching rule in the charter, but I'm, I'm not.
I guess the question is, is this a commission that we feel like we need to have a little bit more oversight of for the people that work?
It would seem right now, yes, but it's, you know, down the road, you know, if you look at it as the big picture, probably not.
Right. And I'm.
I'm, I'm thinking back on the Tesla period and the fact that he would speak a lot at town council meetings.
Yeah, there was a lot of interaction.
And I thought it was fruitful because it kept everybody informed.
And you'd expect that too. You, you even invite them, the utilities commissions.
Well, that is, that's a little different though than us having a say in who gets appointed to the commission. I mean, we could, we can ask them to come. Speak regardless of whether we have any control over who gets on there or not, right? I mean, I think. But I don't, I don't feel any strong. Push or pull to, to weigh in on who's. Particularly since we'll be getting input from. The DTC, the RCP, other, other selectmen. I don't know. I sort of have faith in that.
My, my only limitation about that is only five people. Is that correct? But most committees are larger that don't require their approval. So I, I just wonder if there's any way that we could say in the initial. For a couple of years or something like that. It's a very small number of people.
Is it the smallest of all commissions?
Well, I think the I committee is, I'm not correct, is five, right? And ethics is larger than. So it's one.
That definitely is five as well.
Yeah. So that's, that makes it more like, unless you change the number and make it people.
And don't forget, you can, as I said earlier, you can have five on a commission or committee like this and then have a subcommittee of others. You know, they don't, they don't have to be even residents. If you call in experts from that town, whatever they have on the subject, you can serve. Report to, to.
I'm talking, that's a brain fart, but can you just clarify, what are the two options? Either it would something, we would change the charter or whatever, and we would be approving or who would approve it, who the appointments.
Or someone.
It would just be for, for.
Which is the standard.
Yeah. Except for a couple of things that we.
Right.
Right.
A few select committees.
Right. And so the question is, do you want to add this to our list of, and I know if we can't do it now, we would have to change charter, but the question is. Would we want to add that to, to the list of committees that we approved?
You mean in the charter? If we have charter review.
Yeah.
Any of us can suggest that. That's for the charter. A charter review change.
That's something we could probably take up another time.
Right, 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 right.
We don't have that much time and I know we have to.
Right.
Maybe that's something we.
Yeah, if we, basically if we decided as a committee to, to require town council confirmation, then we would have to give the, uh, virtue Moses. A fair opportunity to draft an opinion. So that would slow down the process. Uh, and it's not that promising that they would.
Right. Could you say, I mean, honestly, I would prefer to, I would actually like it to be one of the lists. Both together at this point. I'm just trying to be expedient in terms of what we need to get done today versus. Something that we could maybe put on, put in a little parking lot that we could discuss at another time.
Do you want to make a motion to table this?
Can I just say anything? And even though it's unfortunate, we town council would prefer to be involved with the appointments after, I'd like everybody to agree.
Well. I think that. The, the, the question that we discussed in recent days that. It would be harmless. It does, there's no risk in suggesting. The board of selectmen, that we would be consulted on something. You don't need a law for that, right? And we could put that in the resolution if you want. It can be resolutionally backed this. While we've already, already said we can have a wraparound resolution and we could, we can say that, you know. In some elegant way that. It encouraged or it's an encourage, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. But the revolution doesn't end up.
No, it was a law. Yeah. It was for minds that you converted to like, to caring about this, maybe calling up, you know?
Right. There's nothing wrong with expressing.
Right.
Our intention of what outcome we'd like to see as long as we're not. Making a law around it.
Yeah.
But a good segue is that Rita. Suggested expansion of mission statement. I. I purposely kept it vague because, or open, I should say, open ended because I want the, the commission to be able to. Decide. Its priorities. But I, and so. And the more words we put in there, the, the, the more we would actually end up maybe restricting what they do as opposed to. But let me read, you want to read what you said?
Yeah. And, and this is like, you know, obviously this is something I'm throwing it out there and it can be discussed, but I, I, I like the idea. I don't think it's might just be able to do them all. So this is what I was thinking. The purpose or mission of the utilities commission is to help ensure that the new candidate community has access to safe, reliable and efficient services. Energy, water, health, communications, through oversight, education and communication. I actually go on to say other things. So I mean, that would be enough for me, but I also say. The use, the utilities commission will serve the community by understanding the current needs and opportunities, defining priorities. Gathering appropriate intelligence, expertise and insights and educating and communicating, communicating to town bodies as well as the community to ensure transparency. So there's a lot in there. But I do think it's. You know, I think the words of like having access and not just to, not just that. The need is not, but I think a little bit more has to be put around that. Can you email that? Sure. To the whole committee? Yeah.
You like the whole thing? Not the short word?
I just want to read it. It's hard for me to.
Right.
I know it is.
I also have a suggestion I can send to both of you. I'm very.
Visual. I am too. I've been able to send it to remember. I'm happy to send it. And there's, I took a couple of words of the.
I'll do it in a minute. So I.
Well, we'll. We'll have to meet again to, to finalize this. But I would like some indication of, in terms of drafting something for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I prefer vague over specific because. I don't know what utility is. Odd. And if you start specifying what the utility is, then. You kind of hamstring the, the committee.
I wonder if I could.
And, and it goes back to kind of a point I made earlier, that some of these utilities are really. Hard to.
Well, Rita's not pulled under in that. She's not primarily suggesting that we address the definition of utility as much as. Education and things like that around the.
You know, that lines down, that, that I wouldn't define utility though.
Right, right, right.
I would, I would, the need for utilities and then go on to whatever. Yeah, I, I don't. That's the point.
And 12.1 defines utilities and I just, so that's what I think.
Well, I just heard it. Perhaps.
Well, let's come back to that.
In line with for those three.
Oh, all right.
Let's come back to that point because I don't want to gloss over that. But. Did you have somebody?
You know, I agree with Mark in terms of keeping it a little broader, but your, the description of your sort of. Overarching implementation or instruction, why we're doing this should include language. In respect for what our first life man is trying to do is he's actually saying, I want a committee that will focus on cell service. And somehow this, this commission when formed should be looking at that first and foremost. And I will say, until that job is done, that's the lane they're swimming in. And forget about everything else because that's what everybody wants this to be. But that's, that's tough to put in language, but you know, I don't want them wasting time on gas, water, electric. I want that on what, what we're doing. This is, this is about, let's not beat around the bush. This is about the cells. And should be their priority. So however we put that in there.
I, and I think we, we can, I mean, we did that sort of with the affordable housing ordinance. We said, this is how we want, this is what we want you to focus on first. But we wrote it in such a way that should, should we solve that problem? I, I think we can do it, but if, if we, if we focus on the A30G issue first. That we wrote it broadly enough so that it could encompass other little aid, I like to call it, affordable housing issues. So to the extent that we want to do that here, I think it's possible to. We just followed that limiting language. We say. Something along the lines of the first priority for this commission is to study and.
The prior graph did that, exactly what you're saying.
I know.
And it didn't, people didn't like it. People didn't want it. But we can put it in the resolution that this is why we're doing this. And that I've said it wrong. That makes it clear.
Yeah, and, and I'd ask, I think affordable housing is a little bit more of a specific thing. I mean, the reason for, for, for the housing, you're pretty clear on what that is for us. I think this is a little different. And I, while cell towers is the, you know, the priority right now. I have a few things in mind and I'm sure other people did too, of other issues we could be addressing.
Well, no, but I think that's clear. And we want to write it so that's clear. But, but I think that Steve's point is a very good one is that. This is the critical issue and this is why people want this to be formed right now. Like this is what the, the town is demanding this for this reason and not, it, it should not be.
Like, this is what the the town is demanding this for this reason, and not, it it should not be written too limited to only that. But we also don't want a committee who says. We can't focus on this only right now, and they have. You know, they have to pull another step when they literally are focusing on that issue now. And solving for that, I think.
If something else comes up, I would hate to limit it. If something else comes up. And it's another crisis, I wouldn't like them to have to be like, you know, adhering to only self-service, but one of my comments was, is I was interested in trying to expand the definition of utilities. To include but not limit to the ones that you listed there. Your telecommunications and the game water. There's other things like sanitation, electric charging stations. Other things that the town might need to address. Is it possible to broaden that?
Well, this was intentional, and I'll give you the example, you know, the pursuers. We have an operation that operates, you know, wastewater treatment, and then we have an oversight. Board, which is Board of Finance, serving as. WPCA, right? So. I I I felt like, why go there? There's already an operation and an oversight body. So why would we clash heads with something that already exists and functions, I think, pretty well?
I think it's just to bring up new ideas and and research and have the able to have discussion publicly, not to interfere with what they're doing, but just to have value added. I don't I don't see it as a threat to the establishment of what's already happening. I think it just gives the ordinance more flexibility to, you know, for what we might encounter in the future.
I I'm just referencing in my mind, what has been going on with the sewer treatment plant or the sewage system. In fact, that some people, like Tommy Green, would like to be hooked up, and it hasn't been answered in its many years since this request was made. And I think that there lacks a a level of transparency in that. Function because it's managed by the town, overseen by the Board of Finance. But I have never seen them address the needs of the community. They just manage the funding that's there. So it's a very different line of of communication that this committee can serve.
I also, well, I also think too, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about how you could. I think on one hand, if it's really broad, then that might be problematic. If it's too specific, that's problematic. I would say. I do think it's important that we leave it to them to decide on the priorities, and and they're going to say self-power is, I mean, if, you know. If they're in tune with the public and 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 what is most important and most pressing in the community, they're going to start with self-power, right? But I do think it's important for them as a separate body to really look for and define what priorities should be for the community. You know, I think that's that that's something that we might be missing, like there might be things that we're just not considering. So I didn't think that important.
We have a recent example. These are, these are nerdy things that I kind of care about. Really nerdy, but. The the people that were opposing the Westfield self-power. Had a problem with the with the procedure that the planning zoning commission followed. And so they came to us to fix that. And I wanted to say, why are you coming to us? It's it's a planning and zoning rule. They have the ability to change it or leave it alone or apply it in the way they want. Why are we getting involved? And so. You know, we we had to react to all that. I would rather, if somebody comes to the door and says, will you guys help me get a planning and zoning rule change? I'd rather be able to say no. Because because there is a competent board that is designed to administer their own, you know, process. And I feel the same way about this. I mean, but, you know, you guys are basically saying, I want to be sure ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the issues that. Posits to consider this are covered by this draft. What what we're doing is we're sitting around making sure that. We cover everything because it makes us nervous not to cover everything. We don't need to cover everything. You just said we want to focus on telecommunications, you know, that that's my position.
I'm okay. I I personally am okay with these three areas, but I think your point covers most, but I I mean, I'll say, and, you know, it's just, I like listening.
But those four words, those those four words, what those four words mean is that there is no limit. To the scope of this.
When you were afraid of happening.
That's true, that's true. That's sewer. It's it's a message. I mean, when. What we do and what we say as rebel attacks. What I understand, when when we adjusted the the pay of the town clerk. There were calls coming in from towns all over the place about, what are you doing? There were people lined up at the door here, other department heads saying, what are you doing? You're restructuring, restructuring the rules, you know. Why did you do that? And we didn't have a rationale. The only rationale we had was that there was a misunderstanding, miscommunication. About what the town council did two years ago. That's the only reason it was even being discussed. There was no philosophical reason, there was no. Other reason for us to do it, but damn it, we did it because we're important because we're town council. And what I'm trying to tell you is, when in doubt, don't legislate. When in doubt, leave it alone. You're just going to muck it up. And we have a structure. We don't need to change everything every night.
Can I just bring up one thing, shake it for you? I mean, for instance, there's going to be a garbage crisis, and there is one in the state of Connecticut. So what happens when we don't know what to do with our garbage? In this, in Buchanan. I mean, I'm just bringing that up as an as an example that might be oppressing conservative in three years. So putting not, but not limited to allows a council, allows this this group to address that issue and bring research and methods of dealing with garbage. Or something that's coming down the hatch. So that that's what, that's where the why that I'm bringing it up.
It's garbage issue.
Yeah.
Well, we've seen, we've seen this where an issue pops up, and the issue pops up, and either the administrator that's in place or the town council says, okay, we've got this issue. Who's best, which committee, which is best suited to serve? And if it's garbage, okay, so then we say, okay, look at what we have, and we say, okay, can you handle this? And we bring it down, we say, okay, utilities, which is yours, they've been running it. I mean, there is some of that that is done. Already, so I don't know how much we have to actually put that in there. So, I mean, something's going to happen where, you know, it's part, it's something to do with our parks, admission of parks, memberships. Four dollars. Okay, that goes in this bucket over here. It's a new problem, but here it is. We've got to set up. Keep in mind that this commission is, doesn't have any lawmaking authority. It can't spend money. It can't set, it can only make recommendations. To the bodies like the town council and Board of Finance, we think you should do something. So who would, who would we go to if we had a trash crisis? We'd come to the town council. We could go to the Board of Dance. We could rely on town staff. You know, we're we're arguing about creating another. You know, but bureaucratic structure, you know, when when we're already capable of dealing with crises. Anyway, that's enough said. I think we should just. Vote on the question. I think it's a legitimate proposal. And if we say what again?
I think this puts us ahead of technology. That's my only thought, that we're more forward-thinking rather than reactive. So that's my suggestion. But not limited to.
So which paragraph is in? Term utility shall mean. Shall include but shall not be limited to. Really, no, I I just thought. The process moving. So you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that twelve point one of the utilities commission ordinance includes the phrase, but not limited to. In twelve point one after water services.
Can we say the term utility?
What I do is, the term utilities shall include but not be limited to.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Also, second?
Two second?
All in favor? So one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we'll put that in.
Did you go now?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a pretty good list. We have ten minutes. What's that?
That mission might take a little longer.
Oh, yeah, so we didn't resolve that.
Yeah. I sent it to everyone, but take a look at it. And I'm not saying that this is the.
No, well. We can't, I mean, like, with with Kim's, we could actually agree on the language. So that's done. I don't. We're not ready to put language together on on mission, but but I would appreciate thoughts on it, though, in the next ten minutes. So the guide. What we can do certainly.
So I sent, I sent, well, what I had suggested around, I don't know if you have some of that, can react to it, maybe.
I certainly like the education and communication part of it, so. I think we should do something.
Well, that's the thing, too. I think just having a closer connection with the community and what they do far, that's sort of missing a little bit.
Right.
You know, top of it.
But I guess that. My question is whether we become more specific. Utilities commission will serve the community by understanding the current needs and opportunities in relation to utilities. Defining priorities, gathering appropriate intelligence, expertise and insights. And educating, communicating to town bodies.
I mean, I I I might even stop, if you wanted to keep it general, I might stop it after. Education and communication. I'd be okay with this stuff.
Anybody else have any views?
Is this on our email?
Yeah. So I, the purpose of the, the mission of the utilities commission is to help ensure that the new Canaan community has access to safe, reliable, and efficient services. Utility something through oversight, education, and communication. Believe it that.
I don't think any commission could have guarantee access to safe, reliable, and efficient services. So I would, I would. I would strike above that. I would, I think it's more about education.
I think the second sentence is actually more accurate. Of the twining property. Yay, you're you're the straight. I think it's, I think that actually, because I, and I like the transparency, you know, you're right, but I, you're right. The only thing is, I would say you can help ensure, not that we would guarantee the can, but I actually, I think, I do, is that that.
That first sentence is just the only thing that, like, gives me pause, is it almost indicates that, like, the commission would be communicating with the utilities, like, it's too. And I I don't think that we are imposing, putting that on the commission. I just think it's a little too general, but the second sentence, I think, accomplishes what you're trying to say. I I actually prefer that. I'd be okay with that.
I I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it might need to be wordsmithed just a little bit. But but I can work with that a little bit, too.
Anybody else?
Maybe that's all. It just. Couple fewer. Okay, so I will, I can, anyone else, I mean.
I I just wanted to add health and safety into that mission somewhere. I don't know exactly where to put it. So health was in the first thing, and then I say, you know, ensure resident health and safety.
Health and safety, wordsmith.
Yeah, wordsmith.
Health and safety, that's a big ask.
I was thinking, following up what Kim just recommended, whether or not they should coordinate with emergency services, because some of these. Utilities touch upon communication. Telecommunications. And other utilities could be considered emergency services in terms of, you know, what to do in case of emergency, what kind of backups we should have.
Well, I don't think we need to specify collaboration among town committees. So for instance, the utilities.
But is it important to?
Well, the problem is, when you name, when you name one body to collaborate with, you imply that you're not necessarily feeling it's important to collaborate with other town bodies. You kind of have to list all the ones that you want or none of them, you know what I mean? I don't think there's ever been any hesitancy, just to take example of the. Affordable Housing Commission, Dan Radman and. Krista Nielsen. More than forthcoming about, you know, their reviews and how the two bodies could coordinate. So I wouldn't favor listing any particular body to coordinate with. Anything I'd say. Coordinate with everybody that. You think is necessary, but I haven't waited to do this, okay, for the last twenty minutes. I want to ask Sven, how we doing, Sven? You might end up on this. One of these. You know. To your recent point, I think when you say the community. It is all wise to, so, you know. You know, the the question is, you know, like, yes, you want to advise and consult, but you don't want to direct. Commissions. And your other point about. You know, who gets to say, you know, something like, but I feel, how do you make it larger or smaller? You know, you know, if you could add words, say something like, or as directed by the elected bodies of the town. In what context with them? You were sitting there saying, like, you know, like, what's, you know, how you, how you either enlarge or subtract, you know, the purview of this committee? And, you know, one of the things, you know, is to sit there and say, you know, like, or as directed, you know, by the elected bodies of the town, you and this. I really say requested and directed.
Yeah.
Request, you know, you get my point, you know, I'm not trying to. Muck around too much in your, you know.
So you're giving them.
Very important stuff, and I really applaud you folks for taking this time to get this.
Yeah.
Back, back on, back on the rails. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We're not going to have to do the work. We just, all we have to do. So long as we don't have to open the charter, I'm just like. Yeah, I know.
Oh, I have another question. This is not, no offense, there's one in the room, but. And you may have explained this to me last time, but the first election customer doesn't exit this year and then, and shall vote in case of tie. Yes. Is that, that's a requirement for every, that's a requirement for every person in the charter.
I'm really voting on it.
I can't imagine there would be a tie if not somebody was up there, potentially on number, right? I didn't realize that 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 first segment, like, on every mission is. That's why Kevin's.
Let's. Not every first.
Are you really, or are you a hologram?
Not every first. Yeah.
All right.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So.
Christina? All favor? Thank you, guys.